We're going to swear in the new councilman.
Raise your right hand, please. I state my name, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
I, Dave Waterman, do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
That I will faithfully and impartially to the best of my ability discharge all the duties of the City of Lakeview, City Councilmember in the City of Lakeview, Sac County, Iowa as of now or hereafter required by law.
I will faithfully and impartially to the best of my ability discharge all of the duties of City Councilmember in the City of Lakeview, Sac County, Iowa as now or hereafter required by law.
One more standing over to guess.
I, Dave Waterman, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
I, Mike Frank, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
That I will faithfully and impartially to the best of my ability discharge all the duties of City Councilmember in the City of Lakeview, Iowa, Sac County, Iowa as of now or hereafter required by law.
And that I will faithfully and impartially to the best of my ability discharge all of the duties of the City Councilmembers in the City of Lakeview, Sac County, Iowa as now or herein after required by law.
All right, so Tammy, can you hear us?
Okay. Okay.
Why don't you guys all sit in there and go like this? Just kind of swear that. Swear. How's that?
Good?
The call may be ordered. Roll call.
Mayor Wester.
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Fulton. Beckman.
Yep.
And Muller. Okay, so Tammy, Tammy is on the phone. She's up in Rochester, so we'll be doing this over the phone with Tammy tonight.
Okay, public forum, Cindy.
Yes. I wanted to come in tonight to let you guys know, as you know, about three weeks ago, we were without electricity. You guys were without for a few hours, but out on Mace Avenue, we were out for almost six full days. And that is not acceptable. I mean, I understand that the lines were down out there, but I also know that with a little bit of effort, maybe not immediately, but at some point in time, some of our grid needs to be looked at to see if there's some way so that we can get electricity out to everyone when we have a storm like we do. Now, I know that if you go north of the Walleye Corner, they have electricity all that way. And you get out there a couple miles north where Todd McKeon lives, and you go west, there is a rain bin site that has electricity to it. Doug Mondrak lives a half a mile west of there. He's serviced by the electrical service coming up Mace Avenue, which was out because the poles were both broken down. Would it not be possible at some point in time to go look at our rural grid and find out, like, for that half a mile stretch, that we could put some poles and lines up that would be there in case of an emergency so that you could backfeed that whole area that was out of electricity? You know, I don't know how cost-effective it would be, but I would really appreciate if you guys would look at that with the electrical department and everyone else to see what that is. Because not having electricity for almost six full days is extremely stressful, especially the week before Christmas. You know, and we run, we have a generator, as most people do, but, you know, running a diesel tractor for 24 hours a day for that long gets to be extremely expensive. And, you know, I figured out how much electricity we use out there, you know, and granted, it's not a huge amount, but it's a pretty good sum. Thirty-two hundred dollars worth of electricity we paid last year. You know, that's not a small amount either. So I just feel like, you know, when the electricity goes out, if there could be something done, you know, not necessarily on a winter day, but could we do something when the weather is nicer and get something up so that half-mile stretch could have some lines that would be emergency lines? So that if we are without electricity, at least we have an opportunity to get something back. You know, we can be pretty patient on a couple, two, three days, but, you know, when you get to day four and day five, then, you know, you're limited as to what electricity you use. You can't wash your laundry, you can't dry it, you can't do dishwasher, because all of the electricity that you have is going for your furnace, your refrigerator, your freezer, that type of thing. So basically, I just wanted you to know that that wasn't really acceptable to us. You know, Mid-America does the best they can, and they bring it in from the west to Lakeview. But when the west entrance to bring electricity here goes down, they have an alternative site to get it to Lakeview, so all of you have electricity. Can we not do something to firm up our electrical grid of the part that you guys are responsible for, for the Lakeview? Electric Department is responsible for. Couldn't we do something to strengthen the grid so that we have an alternative way to get electricity out there too? And that's basically all I wanted to say for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Let's see if Jeff can take a look at it.
How often does that happen?
Well, it happened the week before for a number of hours, but you guys were without in town for a while, too. It's happened two or three times, probably, a couple times in the last probably 10, 15 years.
And what's longest? Does this last the longest?
Yes, it was like almost six full days.
Okay.
And, you know, and right before Christmas is a really difficult time, you know, more so than if it'd been.
Can't plan them storms though, you know?
No, I know, but, you know, we just wanted to see something done a little quicker than six days.
Jane?
I'd like to address.
Yes.
I'm Jane Crow. I live at 351 Lakewood Drive. I grew up in Lakeview, retired here, and now I'm a Lakeview girl. Lakeview is beginning 2022 on a high yield. And our small but mighty city is fortunate to have strong organizations reaching through relevant roles. The city council is forging ahead to keep Lakeview viable in an ever-changing climate. So please consider these New Year's resolutions. Focus on progress and maintain our city as a top-notch, great place to live, work, learn, and play. Make good decisions based on facts, not on bogus stories, fake news, gossip, disinformation, and not on unscientific and valid surveys. Provide amenities that benefit residents and visitors alike. Please keep in mind that you are accountable to voters and non-eligible voters, too. This also means that you are accountable to seasonal residents who contribute time, talent, money to our community. Stay the course, but be open-minded and embrace positive change. Good luck and happy New Year.
Thank you, Jane.
Thanks, Jane.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Chanelle Sholde. I live at 135 Lakewood Drive. I want to thank Scott Peterson, Dave Waterman, Dale Beckman, Mike Frank, Gus Cleveland, and my husband Randy Sholde, who opened the surveys, the sealed surveys on December 31st. There was 569 mailed out, 280 of them was returned. 216 had voted no, which is 77%, and 52% or 52 was yes, with 18.6%. And there was some votes that were undecided. I know it's not an official survey, but I do think it represents what the people want in this town. I am all for a convention or an entertainment event center. My problem is with a city-owned one. I know if we can't get grants if it's a private one, but when the hotel and the restaurant was built, they were private investors, and they did it without public grants. I did put these results on the page, on the Lakeview Community Center page last night, and within five minutes, they were deleted. I'm not sure if it's because they didn't want anyone to know what they were or not, but I think it was a comment that could have been on that page. Mrs. Drilling had commented on the Facebook page on December 16th that for our city councilman to find out what the majority of the citizen thinks, and I quote, "fringes on unethical behavior." To me, that is what the job of the elected officials are. This is why we vote, all of you men and women, in to represent us Lakeview residents. And I, too, have been a resident of Lakeview for 63 years. I call this my hometown, and I've already been very proud to have people come and enjoy Lakeview. I really think that's all I need to say, and I will say, I was one of the citizens that wrote the letter and sent it out. Thank you.
I'm Connie Ason. I'm president of the foundation, Lakeview Foundation. I want you to know that there's almost $200,000 in right now from private people that have given money for this. If this isn't, if they are sending their money, they are for it. If you want to send out a survey, you don't do it that way. I didn't send my back, and I know a lot of them didn't, and I wrote an ad trial. It's a bogus survey. I toss it in the garbage. That's where it belongs.
And that's fine, and that's your privilege.
No, that's.
That's your privilege not to send it in.
But your, but your facts are not correct, and your 77% is based off what you got back.
Exactly, and that's what I said.
But that is not 77% of the people.
This is, this is public forum, not a debate back and forth.
But I did not say it was 77% of the people. I said of the returns.
Anybody else? Public forum. Okay, consent agenda. Any additions or corrections? Motion to approve?
Uh huh.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Yes. Thank you. Frank?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yep.
Muller?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 2201 is appointing city officers. Motion to approve? Second? Roll call.
Muller? Fulton?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 2202 is appointing the city attorney. You're willing to serve, Dave?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion to approve?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Steinke?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yep.
Frank?
Yes.
Fulton?
Yep.
Muller?
Yes.
Okay, the, I'm proposing to appoint Councilor Steinke as mayor pro temp. And there's some, in the past, we've, I'd like to have some city council members attend the library board, his historic preservation, stuff like that. I realize if you're working, you can't do those things, but if there's any that you'd like to volunteer for, now is the time. Mike's going to be on the landfill commission.
And then also, we would have had, have appointed an alternate to the, to the Sac County Solid Waste Commission in case, in case Mike would not be able to attend the asset, we'd have an alternate.
I can do that.
Mayor Westergaard is the alternate?
Anybody interested? Any boards we have?
We don't have a list of boards on here.
No.
They're in your, they're in your, in the memo on page two. These would just be the appointments that we would look at in Solid Waste Commission. And then the HDC Library Board, Park Board, P&amp;Z Board of Adjustment.
On the library.
It's important that a council member goes to some of these. At least you know what they're thinking and what they can and cannot do. But I realize that during the day.
Dave would retain the historic?
I can do the P&amp;Z.
We had you down for Park Board, Tammy. Is that still okay?
Yes.
Fill in the best you can.
Are the others filled?
Yeah, so what we have is the Historic Preservation Commission would be Councilor Walton. Library Board would be Councilor Steinke. Park Board is Councilor Muller. P&amp;Z Board of Adjustment, Councilor Beckman, and the Solid Waste Commission, then Councilor Frank, with Mayor being the alternate.
Thank you.
Okay, we have to motion to approve those appointments.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Okay, Frank?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 2203 is approving the appointment of the Fire Chief, Jim Parles.
Second?
Roll call.
Beckman?
Yes.
Walton?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 2204 is appointing the rest of the members to the fire department.
And just note that the membership had changed just, I think, one person this past year. Chad Sklep had stepped down, Cody Brown, then our police officer is on the fire department now then, too.
So will.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Fulton?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Steinke?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Okay, 2205 is our official bank.
Yeah, so this does list the official depositories as Farmer State Bank and Iowa State Bank, both of them, with established maximums of both $3 million.
Second?
Yes.
Roll call.
Muller?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Walton?
Yep.
Thank you.
2206 is listing the gross salaries for elected unemployed officers and employees.
Yep, so this is just the listing of what the gross salaries and wages were that were paid to anybody who was paid by the, any employee who was paid by the city last year. And then this is the same resolution that's published in the paper.
Motion to approve? Second? Roll call.
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Walton?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes.
Can we expand on the park board? We have two ladies who have long cared.
We do have, have two ladies who had submitted their application to see Joanne Peters and Vicki Tombs had shown interest in being appointed. Nikki Wiggins's term is up also, and Nikki would also be interested in being appointed, reappointed. One thing to consider here just is about staggering the terms. We've increased the size of the board, and with that, then, the, it needs to be staggered so that every two years, about a third of the board comes up for appointment. Okay, so it's actually every two years, two would come, every two years, two would come, every two years, one would come. Okay, so with these, these new appointees, what I would propose is that they're six-year terms. And we would propose to appoint one person for six years, one person for four years.
Joanne Peters a full-time resident now?
She is, yep. She has made the switch.
You need a motion to approve?
Yeah, we do need to figure out, yeah, who would, who would like.
Any volunteers for the six-year one? What the coin?
Slap a coin was about as good a answer as anything.
Who's not here for the six-year?
No, I think by rights, Mickey does. She is being reappointed. She would get reappointed to a six-year term. So the, just the decision about whether it would be Joanne or Vicki to be a six or a four-year term. You have a, you have a preference? Anybody got a quarter?
I just went to Joanne's of six.
Joanne was six.
I think you're the four.
You mean she's the five?
Five, yeah. I think he's four. Is that your motion, Tammy? Roll call.
So when I get this straight again, so. I think that was me. Who's our four-year member was?
Vicki.
Vicki.
Okay.
Joanne the five.
Oh, they're, actually, they don't, it's not that it's four, five, six, two of them, there would be one four-year term, two six-year terms. Nicole and Joanne would be, would be six years. Some new people are appointed only every two years after.
Change to your motion, Tammy.
So Vicki, so I agree like this, that Vicki's term would expire on December 31st of 2025. Nicole and Joanne, her terms to expire on December 31st of 2027.
And I'll make that motion.
Second?
Okay.
Roll call.
Okay, Muller?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Walton?
Okay, the CD BG Housing Grant, we need to approve the request for payment number 12.
Yeah, so this is request for payment number 12, so we would pay this amount, the $18,930 is paid to Region 12 Council of Governments. And then we'll have a second motion that approves. Excuse me, we'll do it the other way around. First motion is request for payment to the state for that amount, $18,930. Second motion would be to pay this number 12 to, to Region 12 Council of Governments. So it is just an in-and-out with grant funds. And these, this project is, what's Marlon Johnson's on, on something?
We have a motion to approve the request?
So will.
Second?
I second.
Roll call.
Walton?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Steinke?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Can we hear motion to approve the payment?
Motion to approve the payment?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Muller? Steinke?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Okay, we got to work on the civil engineer for the green design of the site plan.
Yeah, so I did get to, talked with two engineering firms and got proposals from them about doing the site plan. And basically, there's three things that are involved in their scope of service, and it's a topo survey of that entire area out there, a drainage study and analysis, and then the preliminary civil engineering drawings. So that's the, the drawings then would be of the, of the site plan, things related to drainage, but primarily green infrastructure stuff then, as it relates to drainage of the building, the parking lot, and then controlling the runoff there as water, as water heads towards the lake. So you'd see the initial proposals begin on, on page 15, and there's, there's just two of them again, one's from Beck and, and one's from Bolton and Mink. And just with this, really, I took proposals from two firms who have significant experience in the green infrastructure side of things. That's really why they were, were chosen.
So is this just for, is this just for green infrastructure? This has nothing to do with the construction design of the building and what we're, because we need new numbers?
True, yep.
So this has had nothing to do with that?
This has nothing to do with building construction. This had, this will have site plan for, this will prepare the site plan for the ground. And, and then does the green infrastructure stuff as well as the parking lot.
And we get a grant for that. That's what we're doing.
Yeah, so that's the other thing on this that becomes more and more time-sensitive. It's about this grant application. Then for the WQI Water Quality Initiative, we had submitted a pre-application to the WQI program, and we have been invited then to submit a full application. Now, the full application is due on February 11th. So within, within Beck's proposal, they had proposed that they would do the work by February 25th, and I talked with them about that on the timeline, whether we can get that, that moved up so that we have everything in place by the 11th, and they can. And just as far as the two firms go, we've utilized Bolton and Mink. They've, they've done us a nice job. We have not utilized Beck for any projects. They've done some planning work for us. But you see, their fees are significantly less, and just if you make a decision and propose, you go back.
So we don't have no references from either one of these two for, for my reference. I'm just asking what they've done around this force before. Can you tell me?
Yeah, you know, I sure can, especially with, you know, with Bolton and Mink, like we said, we've, we've used them. They've, they've done a lot of green infrastructure work up at Storm Lake and had a lot of success with that.
But not for us.
We used them at the VAPCO Detention Project and Dixie Lake, the bio-retention cell at Dixie Lake.
And Beck has done nothing for us?
They've done some planning work for us.
But no engineering.
But, but no engineering work. Now with Beck, though, again, they have done a lot of the green infrastructure work up at Oka Boche. And they were the chosen firm that, that Oka Boche has worked with a lot up there.
And you, did you say he can do it by February 11th or cannot?
Can, yes, he would. He can, yep.
Both of them can.
Yeah, they turn around and, yeah, make, they'll both make it happen.
Because Beck is half-price or what?
Yeah. Did they say why the price is so much different?
Bolton and Mink has, has never been the less, the least expensive option.
I've never seen them yet.
I'll make a motion to move it back.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
And before we do that, that is coming out of the TIF funds?
Out of TIF funds. That was.
The expense of that engineering would be out of the TIF.
No, not property tax.
Right, so it, so it would come out of TIF funds. The city had committed that $500,000. It would be part of that.
We've had water issues out there for years. If we don't ever do this, we're still going to take care of that water problem.
It, yeah, we really haven't talked about that enough, just to know that there's some real big water problems there. During, during times of real heavy, heavy rain, water has come barreling down through their flows across the road. And get a chance to, to address a concern there.
But nothing on the construction of the building, electrical?
No.
Yeah, we're doing that with something different?
Yeah, so where we're at with that is, you know, on the construction side of things, that we are working with, with Lakeview lumber, so we've been working with Aaron, and Aaron has some initial ideas in place, and we're to the point now where he's got a lot more specific questions about the building and what would need to be done with that. So we'll get a, a design committee together to meet with Aaron and be able to answer these specific questions then about the build. Excuse me. And then, so we work, work with Aaron on that, then he, he refers it to their structural engineering guy, that we can actually get a sealed set of plans on the structural side of things. We will need to still work with an engineer on electrical, camp, and plumbing. And.
I just didn't know if that was part of the.
Yeah, it has nothing, nothing to do with it. This is site, site planning only.
Motion, second, Craig.
Yes.
Roll call.
Okay, Walton?
Yes.
Steinke?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Frank, thank you.
Okay, we have CW Concepts, Craig? No, whatever.
You guys, Thursday, I dropped off a couple sheets. Do you guys all have a copy of that?
They do, so, yep, they have, they have, actually, you dropped off four sheets. They have.
Well, so what I'm here for tonight is looking for a partnership with the city. Where you guys are well aware of the ground sold by the JGS Farms LLC, so.
so you have that in front of you, that shows the parcel that they are selling.
Yeah, so we're, yeah, on page twenty.
We have a purchase agreement to, to buy that and develop that with that agreement. Uh, it's contingent upon financial help from the city, uh, to get the infrastructure and utilities and everything, yeah. Um, I know it's been expressed to me that the city, when you do something like this, that the city is responsible, they're gonna take care of the water and electric and give enough to you. But we're looking for a, a bigger commitment, uh, in the form of, uh, asking if you guys would put the infrastructure in, you know, the streets, the sewer and all that. That's a big ask, I understand. You'll see here, uh, what we've done is a, uh, we've got a cost estimate from ISB, engineering firm to get, uh, all the infrastructure done. And, uh, at the bottom, it shows a number, it shows the total project costs, we'd be looking at the construction costs of that, their total project costs, I was told is, it's got some, the non-construction costs, I don't need to, I can disregard that. Now, this is just a preliminary, these guys have gone through, they don't know a whole lot about it, this is just a, hey, give us a cost estimate, you know, this is what the specs are. So they've, they've gone through and done that, but this covers everything A to B, as far as it's got your rain garden in there, it's got your water, it's got your sewer, it's got the street, it's got the granular, so I mean, it's, it's the total package here. Like I said, it looks like, it looks like a really big number. I, I believe that we can get that number down after we kind of, you know, start, uh, finalizing a few things and putting the pencil to some of that a little, a little sharper. But with this project, you'll see on this sheet, it's plotted for twenty-five lots there. This infrastructure that we'd be putting in would be for fifty lots, it'd be for both sides of the street. So eventually you have a fifty lot subdivision in your town here. The, uh, sheet that I also included was an estimation in the, uh, tax, uh, tax liability per lot once they get developed. That's how it would be paid for. Just based off of the twenty-three lots, if you, if you, uh, had an assessed value of a three hundred fifty thousand dollar home per lot, you're gonna get your money back on this within a fifteen year time period. Now, it's not gonna happen in fifteen years, but the, my estimation would be a fifteen to twenty year return on the first twenty-three lots. If we can develop that other side of the street and get that done, you can cut that into a ten to fifteen year return on, on your investment. That's off of the taxes alone. The other thing that, uh, factored into this would be the utility, the city-owned utilities. You know, the average utility rate in town, I've been told, is a hundred and thirty dollars a month. That, uh, that works out to the same amount of value back to the city as what the taxes do. So that, that can totally offset any interest rate that you would have if you bond this project. It can also add to getting to the end result of getting this thing paid off. We develop this, then it would become a city-owned street, city-maintained street and all that, just like any other street in town. You guys have already annexed this portion of ground into the city, so it's within city limits, and I think it would be a great asset to the town. We are looking to get a commitment from the city as soon as possible. We'd like to see this project happen before the end of the year. Um, we've got a, uh, in our purchase agreement, we need to get a commitment, one way or the other, from the city by March fourteenth. I believe you guys have a, a meeting, uh, on the fourteenth, that'd be the first meeting of that month. So that's kind of the timeline that we're looking for. As far as, uh, the rest of that goes, you know, the, you guys have, you guys have committed to other projects in town, I get that, you're, you got a lot of money extended out, a lot of projects going at the same time, which is great for everybody. This project here, once it gets done, we're ready to develop right away, we're ready to start building homes on it. And my idea, my goal for this project is not to have a hundred to a hundred fifty thousand dollar lot around the lake. It's to have an affordable lot that your middle-income family can come in, they can build a house there, and they can have that lake community, you can be part of that whole lake scene, you know, make it affordable for them. I'd like to do some of the workforce housing, you guys have talked about that a lot in the past. That's what I would like to get started with, with some of that. You've got Vapco coming in and expanding, and you're looking for housing, this would be a great place to start and to start doing some of those on our end. So that would be the other commitment that we would make, is that we would start to develop this almost immediately as soon as the lots are available. Uh, there's other developments that has gone on that, you know, are on year three or four and hasn't had a spade in the ground yet, so our commitment would be, as soon as it's ready, we're starting, so.
How many homes are you talking about then? What's your goal first year?
You know, there's twenty-five lots in this first phase, the phase two would be an additional twenty-five. Um, just for this portion, it has been expressed that we could purchase the, uh, other side of this, the street to the east, and if down the road, maybe, maybe my kids will be doing this, I don't know, but at that point, maybe they can develop that into more, you know. Right now, like I say, we're talking about fifty lots, I think that in the end it'll probably yield around total, maybe that forty-five, forty-six lots, somewhere in there, you know. As far as homes, who's to say that somebody doesn't buy two lots and builds, you know, one home on two lots? I can't say that, I, I don't know for sure. But either way, it gets assessed at, at a higher value, you know, per lot. The, uh, like, like, so, yeah, here, this lot on here, this house that I had them, the county assessor do for me, that's a three hundred fifty thousand dollar valuation. I mean, show me a brand-new home around the lake that only is, uh, appraised at three hundred fifty thousand, I mean, I wouldn't want to come in with a six hundred thousand dollar per house valuation, I just think that that's blowing smoke. But a three hundred fifty thousand dollar is realistic, and I think about every house that would go up there would have that type of a value, and be taxed on that value, so.
So you won't be speculating and inspect houses or?
Yeah, absolutely.
You will?
Yep.
How many, how many of them would you figure out, Muller?
Depends on how it all goes. Um, we, we, we have this, we got on the agenda here on Thursday, we've had some interest in people who've just seen your agenda, want to know what's up, and have called me already out of the blue and said, hey, you know, we would be interested in building over there. You know, so that's a promising sign for, for me, and should be a promising sign for you guys in town, you know, that don't plan on these lots sitting empty very long, you know. Twenty-five is a lot, I mean, I, I understand that it takes a lot to do twenty-five, but we're willing to plant a seed and get houses going. On a new development like that, when nobody else is building, it takes the first house to get going, you know, takes the first or the second, and, and we're looking to see, you know, if our first back home goes good out there, great. If we're, if we're ready to do another one, we'll just keep moving, you know. Uh, at the same time, anybody and everybody else that wants to build, you know, we'll be able to build out there, you know. So there are some stipulations as far as the, uh, in our purchase agreement, there would be no mobile homes, no pre-manufactured homes, it would all be uh, single-family dwellings, uh, no three-story structures or anything like that, so it is gonna be solely for residential, it's not gonna be anything commercial, anything like that. So that, uh, that's that, I guess, but I would love to, uh, get some sort of a way that we can work together on it and get this done, and tell me where we need to go next, so.
We'll run it through. We'll run it through the budget process.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Sounds good.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have to have the agreed upon procedures for the budget.
Well, that is that, this document there that kind of looks like an audit, it's not, not a financial audit, but this is the one thing that's done once a year for the, for the city, um, about the, um, what the state calls agreed upon procedures. So it, it, uh, is them taking a look at the, at the financial side of things, and then it's also looking at the processes and everything that the city utilizes for that. Um, just starting on page eight is where the, uh, the detailed findings, recommendations come through. Um, A talks about segregation of duties, and we always get a, get a ding on segregation of duties, about how, uh, there is just two of us in the office, so we, we have a tough time segregating duties in a, in a way that, that, uh, assures that many, you know, several different hands are touching, touching the deposits or paying bills or anything like that, we have problems, because of course, there's only the two of us. So, um, what we have done over the years is, uh, got the mayor involved more on that, and, and then, of course, John not only, uh, signs checks and, and approves all that stuff, but we also involve John in the, uh, in the, uh, month-end reconciliation. Uh, B about, about outstanding checks, we have several outstanding checks that basically we need to make sure to get those to the Great Iowa Treasure Hunt. And we had, uh, we had reissued those checks to the, to the check holders one time, and now it's time to turn that around and get it to the, to the Great. C talks about budget, we exceeded budget on a couple of, of, uh, functional areas, public works and debt service. Now, first of all, just with debt service, we exceeded by a hundred and ninety-eight dollars, so that's rounding down, I guess, when I probably should have rounded up on, on the budget, so that was over by a hundred and ninety-eight dollars. The other one, it was over by eleven thousand one eighty-five, and that, and that has to do with how they treat transfers. It, uh, the total amount of money that we spent out of road use tax was the same, okay, but, but transfers were included in that. So we spent more actually on streets, spent less on transfers, so the amount that was spent on streets, uh, showed a little higher than.
What are you, what are you talking about when you say transfers?
We transfer that to the commu, to our capital projects fund. It's just a way that, that we, uh, basically set aside, uh, money to be able to do projects. So with, with this one in particular, like, we, we fund street projects with some of our road use tax money. So that would have been a transfer from road use tax to capital projects. Okay, uh, D, this was, is the, uh, was the big finding, I think, the, the new finding that, that's happening with, with lots of entities this year, and it has to do what she calls, or Audrey calls questionable donations, but this would be contributions to private nonprofit entities. You see the two that are listed there, one is the, uh, it's one like Country Club and one for, uh, the Lakeview Community Club. Now, um, just with this, that there is a, something in the constitution, say constitution actually, that, that prohibits governmental bodies from making gifts to private nonprofit corporations. So, um, the concept about doing anything with the, with the Country Club or the golf course is very, maybe questionable and, and likely, uh, would, would be a violation. Um, our interaction with the community club, not just, we're just making a donation to them, if we want to continue to do that. And, and things that, that the community club really does, and the two biggest things would be uh, paying for a, a marketing, uh, person, which the, the city currently funds half of the marketing position, and then paying for advertising. So it certainly can still be, uh, okay to do that, what we would do is have the, uh, the community club invoice us that, that we're paying for the actual services that are rendered, and we're paying for the, uh, for the advertising. And in the past couple of years, it's just been, the city had budgeted so many dollars, we'd get, we'd just cut them a check for that total amount. This, uh, that probably is, is not permissible, and we would need to, again, be reimbursing for specific items.
So they'd do that every time they'd write out a check for different advertising, and different magazines or whatever might be the case?
Well, I think that we'd still likely just receive an invoice from the community club, say, once or twice a year, and turn around and, and pay. Now, it's, it's the specific things that have been paid, they'd have to itemize all of the advertisements.
So basically, instead of making the one payment, we, they collect some invoices and then turn them over to the city, is that how?
Yeah, it adds a lot more to do with supporting documentation maybe than the, than the fact that the city is participating. It just, it needs the supporting documentation for the specific thing that it's been spent on.
So do you have to do that every time, let's say, January we're in this magazine, February we're in another?
Yes.
So every month I'd have to?
And they have that, they, they get invoices on everything, everything anyway. So, I mean, it, it becomes an additional bookkeeping thing, but it's not anything that's insurmountable. Okay, um, page ten then, things on financial conditions, that they observed deficit-ending balances in, in two line items. This isn't funds, these are just project funds. Uh, green infrastructure at negative balance of twenty-four thousand seven forty-two, and then, uh, capital projects for the CDBG housing rehab of, of negative six thousand six seventy-five. That's an accounting thing, that there's a, a payment that was posted to a wrong account that would square that up. And then, uh, actually, we've received some more funds, uh, this current year on the, on the green infrastructure, it's seventeen thousand dollars in the hole right now, which we would need to transfer some funds at some point to bring that back to zero.
Do we bring that out of our general then?
Yeah, most likely from the general. Last thing there, uh, talks about the monthly treasures report, that the, the monthly report that the council receives is a, is an expanded spreadsheet that goes into great detail about all these projects accounts and everything that we have. Okay, the software, um, the, our financial software spits out a treasures report, and it's just based upon, upon, uh, funds. And what this, uh, note is saying is that the, the city treasures report didn't balance against, uh, the, the treasures report from the, uh, from the software in these three areas, local auction sales staff, fifth, capital projects. Now, actually, I would add one other thing to that, is, is that the electric improvement fund also was, was different, but she rolls that into capital projects. And the one thing that I would disagree about this, about this, uh, note is where it says general ledger balances were less than the treasures report, some are less, some are more, and then the net is zero. So it, uh, the balance, the grand total balance, we always balance grand total and everything. But, uh, so we've made some, uh, some correcting entries, they've been made in, uh, in June, and this, this has been attended to.
Nothing to it.
Right.
Yeah.
You have a motion to approve now? Have a motion to approve?
Yeah, we have a motion to approve the before. I'll make it, second.
Second.
We'll call.
Stankin.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
Wolton.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna review, review the draft of the capital improvements plan.
Yeah. Let's flip to page twenty-four. So this is a process that we've used for the past several years about looking at a, at a five-year capital improvements plan. And as we work through this process, uh, what it ends up being is that if items are included in year one of the, of the capital improvements plan, they'd be included in the budget then next year. So just note that, uh, that there's several things in here that are really, uh, included for discussion purposes, and, uh, we've included, I, I have included more in, in this, uh, in this first year than what I think would probably be technically feasible to do. But I do want to just go through several of, of these things with you. And again, these, uh, certainly open, open for discussion. Uh, technology upgrade, we just have set aside five thousand dollars to have some funds available for technology upgrades needed. Annual financial exam was this, and the thing that we just reviewed, so we have, we do have to do that every year. Now, back in the old days, in the old days, about ten years ago maybe, they did not do this annual financial report, the city did an audit, but it was only done once every four years. So we have continued on that same timeline then, to where we would do this, this annual, uh, financial report every year, but once every four years, we'd look to do an audit. So if you flip the next couple pages back to two years, you see that it, it's called a four-year audit there, and we would, uh, do a full examination of the books then on, uh, the fourth year. Okay, that economic development fund, the city has had budgeted twenty-five thousand dollars and, and comes from hotel motel tax, and that is funds then that, that funds that business improvement, uh, grant. So, um.
That's the stuff like we did for Bob Moore, Kevin Smith.
Yes, yep. Yep. See, a community center, um, is listed in there, and this would actually be then construction of, of community center by the time budget rolls around. So remembering again that this budget starts in July, and so it would run. and so would run July twenty through, through, uh, June of twenty-three. That, uh, that could conceivably, conceivably be the timeline for the construction of the community center. Generator here at city hall, twenty-five thousand, we're, and so it's, uh, grant. That's that FEMA grant we were looking to apply for seventy-five percent, uh, federal, ten percent from the state is fifteen percent local. In the electric department, replacing the, the VAC. Cost on that's about seventy thousand. Okay, this thing called the electric capital fund, that would be, uh, one of those transfers that we would do, transfers money from electric into, into our capital projects fund, okay? And what it's doing is saving money for, uh, equipment then later on. So every year we have saved thirty thousand dollars from the, uh, from the electric fund, goes into this electric capital fund. Okay, proposed projects then that we talked about that overhead line.
Pull back a second, how much is in that electric capital fund then? Is that like you do for the fire department with new trucks?
Yeah, it's similar Dale, but you know, the fire department gets the remainder of their balance rolled in there. This is thirty thousand dollars every year. And then we, we spend money out of it and I'd, I'd have to check the balance, but it's, uh, it's a significant round and I'll tell you.
So would that balance, or is that something that balance could be used for some of those other projects that's down there lower?
Well, just, it's, it's more like, uh, when, if we purchased the VAC, the VAC comes out of the, the electric capital funds.
Instead of the electric club?
Right, yep. Then, uh, looking at, at the next few projects down there, landing on east shore, outlet twenty, Lakewood Partners stuff at, uh, potentially south of Dixieland, Hanky Electric and Streetlights, the Shaven Electric Projects, those are, are all things that are likely pending then for next year. Total on that was around a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which was very similar to the amount that we had budgeted for this current year. That was, well, similar, I tell you it's forty thousand dollars more, but, uh, but similar. Uh, the notion of, of starting, starting to create a, a set aside fund for a new VAC and that's just one of those where, you know, you, uh, the truck is three or four hundred thousand dollars and we need to specifically start saving some funds, uh, years ahead of time before we would, we were, uh, ready to do that. Fire department, the, uh, equipment bus through payments from the general fund or grants or donations. And, you know, just in, in general, when we, if we look at this thing and say we're, we would put a, uh, an equipment bus in our plan and it, and it doesn't happen for, for first year, you know, that's, just know that the funds are still there and, and we're still continuing to build towards that. So, same thing really with any of our equipment purchases.
Did they ever put out a different bus?
Yeah.
We're actually, we wouldn't see it for, we got an additional price, um, and we wouldn't see it till twenty, twenty-three.
Okay. Okay, generator for the fire station, again that same grant. And then rescue equipment that the, uh, the fire department had, had proposed, ten thousand dollars, which would be paid from general fund, basically that'd be a budget item in the fire department. Okay, within garbage, every, basically every other year we need to buy garbage bags. And so that's about eighty-five hundred dollars worth of garbage bags. When we buy garbage bags, it's enough to about fill that storage room there in back of mine. And, uh, so we buy that, like I say, about every two years.
So we buy the garbage bags and then resell?
Yes.
So why is that underneath the garbage department when it, shouldn't it be just like when we buy electric and sell electric? Or buy water, yeah?
I'd say ju-, these things are just show as expenses and you won't see the, the revenue shown.
Well, I don't see buy electric out of the fund, the electric department, but we buy garbage bags out of the garbage department. It doesn't make sense to me because we, that's a pasture.
Well, just that it's a, uh, it's a physical thing and guess we're buying too. But, uh, it i- it is, yeah, you're right, as far as a cost of, of doing the business, just that every, every other year we, uh, we do need to buy these, these garbage bags. So as we get into analyzing the funds, what you'll see is that about, uh, one year we make a little money in the, in the garbage fund when we don't buy garbage bags, next year you lose a little money in the garbage fund when we do buy garbage bags. But it's just every other year, just, uh, I know that it doesn't happen every year. Parks, again transferring some money into the general capital fund, so, um, that would be, uh, most likely lawnmower purchases then, we're buying equipment out of that, uh, general capital fund. Log cabin shingles, and we really need to, uh, have some discussion about that and how we would, would go about to doing that, but, uh, the condition of the shingles on the log cabin really needs to be addressed. And if anybody has, uh, great ideas, especially about how, if we could organize a community project on that, that'd be great, otherwise it, it would be expensive to, uh, have somebody come replace those shingles, those shakes.
Can't you write a grant for that?
Yeah, grants.
There's gotta be a grant for that.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's a historical one.
Yes.
Okay, next one was epoxy, the, on the floor in the shelter house. And again, I'd be interested in folks' thoughts on that, about twelve thousand dollars to, uh, to do that. It's a nice addition, so interested in your thoughts.
It'd make it much more attractive than the way it is. Spend a lot of money fixing it up, not fixed the floor.
Yeah. Uh, aquatic herbicide and harvester costs. See the past, uh, couple of years, it has been running about forty thousand dollars on, on herbicide and harvester. Uh, this past year was actually significantly less than that because we only applied half of the herbicide that we had purchased. And then, uh, harvester costs were virtually nothing because we didn't, uh, we didn't even use, didn't even put it in the water. But we do need to continue to, uh, to budget for those operations. Being our grant is funded about seventy-five percent of the, uh, of those operations. Okay, the pad and utility project at lots twenty-eight through forty-seven in, in Camp Crescent. So this would be a, a complete remodel of those lots. And, uh, so it's new utilities and, uh, and new concrete pads there, uh, changing the size of, of the lots and reducing, reducing the number in there, I'm sure a few. Just interested in your thoughts on, on that too.
I got a couple of questions. Why do you pour a cement pad for a camper to sit on in the campground? And seventy-five percent of these campers go home, they sit on the grass?
Sure.
I mean, if, if I was wanting a camper down there, I would want the cement pad beside the camper to utilize the, don't have to pour rug out, don't have to rece.
We hear those comments, uh, from, from time to time, you know, people love the, love the concrete pad, but we do hear those comments then too, you know, about.
At seventy-five thousand dollars, it's...
Oh, it's a, yeah, very much a very significant project.
I mean, it's a camper. No, it's a house, it, it's a house anymore.
Those are the first lots, the rest of the ones with cement pads, but then they pay two bucks of money to pit, to sit there too. So this lot, lots twenty-eight to forty-seven will be the ones right behind the new cabins?
Yeah.
And I don't know the direction you're gonna call it?
Not the, it's not the furthest east area that ordinary you see, but it's the, it's the ones that are, as you come in the main entrances, be the ones on the left as you're going down the main road.
Right, okay. And then if we, I don't know if Jeff has had a chance or, or Dean, if they had a chance to find out about our electric grid coming over to there, what can we can't handle?
Boy, I don't know, but I don't think we've done a whole lot with, with that.
Because didn't we, didn't you guys talk about that at the last meeting about how much they could handle?
And we, we're still working with, uh, DGR on our system study in general and we'll have them take a look specifically at that too.
And then while we're talking about that, I got a goofy question for you. And I know this has come up in the past of different councils, of different council members, but how come we don't charge ourselves if they can't ground for electric and water?
Okay, so we charge our, we charge ourselves, we just have the electric department pay for us.
Right, so why is that in the electric department, not the camp, the campground department?
It just, I guess it's just been past operation.
You know, I'm, I'm all, I'm all in favor of making improvements at the campground. It's a viable asset to our community, I see it every day, but I think we need true cost before we know what we're doing down there. And I know year, in the years past, the parks workers weren't paid out of the campground and now they're paid out of the campground. Their employee, campground employees that mow the parks and stuff and that was a separate deal.
Yeah, everybody's paid out of parks, you know?
Yeah. So I think, and, and I've heard this a lot from a lot of different people in town, how much are we really making out of the campground when we don't charge ourselves for the water sewer, electric? And again, like when these guys go down there and do repair works, it's the electric department doing the repairs, it's their time, not the campground time. Is that something we can look at?
Um, yeah, for sure on the utilities, on how we charge ourselves utilities, that can, yeah, that can be, be a, that's just a change in how budgets minister. On how our, how our time is administered for, for payroll purposes. You know, we have, we have electric department employees that are in there, historically have always been paid out of it.
Correct, but you know, last year when we had all the issues down there, we've got these guys down there on the weekends on overtime and yet that goes against the electric department, not against the parks department. So my point is, when we're making these improvements, we need to make it so we're not having these problems now. And then we're separate, separating that stuff out. So we're not robbing Peter to pay Paul so much, does that make sense?
It absolutely makes sense Dale, because of course it happens. And, and it's happened here a lot about how we utilize electric funds. Electric funds have been used to pay for other things too. That's, that's a true.
And it does, don't get me wrong, that's our bread and butter besides our tax revenue, but I think we need to have a more general consensus of this is what our campground's truly making, this is what we know as a council member, so we can sit and put back into that campground to keep it coming, and then we can always take more from the general fund for these other projects in the parks.
Could I say something? All of that is true, the only thing is when you look at, at what the campground makes, you can't exactly say this is what the city makes from the campground because you're also looking at that group of people down there spends money in the businesses, comes back in under laws.
One hundred percent agree. I, I don't really care if the campground shows on paper that we lose ten thousand dollars a year, to be honest with you. I think the campground's a great asset for a community, brings a lot of people to town. I just think it'd be nice to see it, what it really is, instead of saying that campground makes us a lot of money when we need to know where it's really making it at. It's like when you own a liquor store, am I making money off of liquor or am I making money off of the pot?
But I agree with that, but I think it's a misperception to the community because they'll look at it and they won't think about the revenue that comes off of it. They'll only look at what's black and white, which is a lot of the problem with councils anyway because they only see what you're spending, they don't see what's coming from that.
Yeah, I think that, and that's our job to keep it that way.
Exactly. Thank you.
I appreciate the input.
Good, yeah, you know, we wanna have a lot more discussion on, on that project and whether this is really something that you, that you, uh, wanna go down that road. Because that, that is time sensitive in one regards, that, uh...
You're talking about lots twenty-eight to forty-seven?
Right, yep.
Okay, so let's talk about lots A, one to A, whatever, the last project we did.
Okay, yep.
Why did that project change? If we're gonna talk about them projects and I guess it's now as good time to bring up a Z. That project changed and now we have a drainage issue down there, correct?
Yeah, when we took out the green infrastructure stuff on the...
We hauled out how many semi-loads of dirt? Do you have any, any idea?
I sure don't.
Do you have a guess?
No, I sure don't.
I do.
Okay.
Over twenty. Semi-loads of dirt come out of there. Plus, I don't know how much dirt come on that bank in front of my house again, which you're well aware of.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, now we have a drainage issue there. When that initial project was slated and I was at these council meetings and I have the initial drawings, we were hauling in a bunch of dirt to help water drain away. How come that changed? I don't wanna go through the same thing if we're gonna update lots twenty-eight through forty-seven.
Sure. Understand, I'd, I'd be concerned about, about drainage there too.
So, so you have an answer to my question?
I don't have one, I have...
Well, somebody had to make that decision.
It, I mean, the grade of the, of the grade of, of the, uh, of the pads is, was, was changed since last?
Well, I disagree with you.
Okay.
Because you actually made a comment at the meeting that they dug the dirt out to lower the grade of the pad so it'd be easier for them to do. A ten-point hit. So I don't want to see lots twenty-eight through forty-seven create another issue like we got in lots A, one to A, whatever that number is, I can't read it. And I don't know how we're gonna fix that drainage problem. I see in our proposal here, I don't know where it's at, but I read it, to put in another tile line down to the lake. That tile line's only to the high water mark.
Yeah.
When the lake is at the outlet level, that's where that tile line is at, because that's the high water mark. So when the lake is at the outlet, if we get a rain, it ain't draining. Now what are we gonna do with that water? So in this drainage study that you're talking about for fifty thousand, or drainage project, do we need to incorporate that to go the other way to the north?
I, I think you gotta take a look at all that stuff, yeah.
Because, I mean, this is a big time project, so we need to do it right. I don't think anybody can disagree with me, it was not done properly the last time.
It has some drainage issues there Dale, there are no denying that.
Right, I mean, everybody knows it.
Yeah.
I, I thought it was kinda funny when I seen the kids out there with their rubber raps going up and down the road. Broken legs. So this center part that you're talking about, lots twenty-eight to forty-seven, right?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what the drainage issue is over there, what it's like, but how much, how much fill would we do and then what's that gonna cause us with these other lots that are highlighted, from two weeks ago, highlighted in yellow? I can't read the numbers, uh, right off the...
Yeah, one through twenty-seven are off to the, at the door.
Yeah, I think so. Isn't that the spread? The street count by...
Yeah, yes, yeah, that's a big lot.
I am one hundred percent invested in that campground, but the right way.
Sure.
And, and the one seventy-five doesn't bother me a bit because we get so much out of that campground it's not even quite.
Our, uh, would tell you that, our gross, gross revenue on camping trickled over three hundred thousand this year for, and, you know, it was the, by far the best year, again, that we've, that we've had down there.
And, and back to my earlier statement, knowing how much electric, water and sewer we use helps us adjust what rates we charge.
Sure. And I do have, I have a pretty good analysis of that, Dale, as far, as far as coming up with, with what all of our budgeted expenses are and then we can, we'll incorporate the, uh, utilities.
Can you put that together for us before we make any votes on this stuff?
Sure.
I think one time we're gonna put a water meter down there and I bet Jack said it was two thousand bucks for the general.